Okay, I will now proceed with the business portion of the meeting. Dr. Bert Bennett, your report.
Thank you, President Vitale and members of the Board of Education. By law, local school councils in Chicago are empowered to determine the names of individuals that CPS schools name contingent upon the approval of the Board of Education. Earlier this month, the local school council from Gompers Elementary School voted to rename its school after the great Jessie Owens. I support this change wholeheartedly and ask the Board to do the same as this change is considered later today. Jessie Owens is an American hero and actually a personal hero of mine. When I was CEO in Cleveland Public Schools, I was proud to inaugurate the Jessie Owens Academy there. As you guys know, as a mom and as a grandmom, I've taught my own family to revere and to look up to Jessie Owens as a role model. And as an educator, I've been fortunate to teach generations of young people the importance of Jessie Owens' life and his legacy to America and to our world history. This morning, we are fortunate to be joined by a representative of the Owens family who will speak to the Board later today. Beverly Gloria Marlene, Marlene especially, I am so pleased that you have allowed me to participate in this next step here in Chicago. And please allow me to say publicly, not only how much I admire and respect your father, but how much I admire and respect you for the continued avocation so strongly for his legacy. Chicago is proud of Jessie Owens, strong connection to the city, and I look forward to seeing a new generation of Chicago's students learn and grow in the classrooms of the Jessie Owens Academy. Today, we are asking the Board to consider an updated elementary school promotion policy for CPS students. This proposed policy was created in close coordination with CPS teachers, principals, parents, and community partners across the district. The district's Office of Teaching and Learning conducted focus groups and worked collaboratively with school-based leadership teams to develop an evidence-based policy that provides our educators with a clearer, more well-rounded picture of both student progress and student needs. The fact is that our current policy has become outdated and defunct. As the Illinois State Board of Education updates its standards, including critical revisions to the ISAT exam, at the district level, we must adapt our policies to ensure that they remain rigorous and aligned with the state and with nationally-normed assessments and metrics for growth. This is really about ensuring that as students advance from one grade to another, they are truly prepared for success. Grade promotion must be based on academic achievement and growth, and the new proposed promotion policy takes a balanced approach to measuring student progress. It shifts the emphasis away from ISAT and SAT 10 and towards the more rigorous Northwest Evaluation Association Assessment, or NWEA. It is important to note that NWEA will be the assessment considered for promotion decisions only until the Partnership for Assessing Readiness in College, or THE PARK, is in place. We anticipate, based on our information from the State Education Department, that THE PARK will be administered statewide in the spring of 2015. Therefore, as we make the transition as a district to the more rigorous Common Core State Standards, it's imperative that we use quality data to ensure that our students are making meaningful academic progress and that we are able to intervene where necessary to provide students with the individual supports that they need to reach their God-given potential. This new policy will help to ensure that our students are making meaningful progress from one grade to another and that our educators, our teachers and principals, have the data that they need to gauge student achievement and to identify essential areas for improvement. I'm confident that this proposed promotion policy will better prepare all of our students, elementary students especially, for success in high school and our high school students for post-secondary success. I'd like to take this opportunity to present to the Board, introduce to the Board, our Chief for Teaching and Learning, Ms. Annette Gurley, for a more in-depth review of the proposed promotion policy that we put before you today. Ms. Gurley?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm liking to remind you that our state adopted the Common Core State Standards in 2010, making us one of more than 40 states that were opting to do so. And CPS began implementing instructional practices to lead to the attainment of these standards during the 2011-2012 school year. Full implementation is underway during this current school year. Instruction in the classrooms, as the CEO just alluded to, is transitioning. It's transitioning from rote memorization tasks to students being engaged in tasks that require them to think critically, to problem-solve, to use evidence to support their answers, and to be creative and innovative, the things that make students successful in college, career, and just make people successful in life. Illinois is one of 26 states that has chosen to use THE PARK, which is the Partnership Assessment for Readiness for College and Career Assessment. This assessment is aligned to the Common Core State Standards, and it's scheduled to be administered for the first time during the 2014-2015 school year. In preparation for this transition, the state has changed the format of the ISAT for our current school year so that it aligns with the Common Core State Standards. Because of the reformation of the ISAT, the SAT 10 scores, which in the past have been used along with grades to determine whether or not students are promoted, are no longer available. The SAT 10 scores typically came from the first 30 items of the multiple-choice ISAT. Again, the ISAT has been reformatted; that information is no longer available. The Northwest Evaluation Association Measure of Academic Progress, which is the MAP, NWEA MAP, is an adaptive assessment that is administered in the spring of the year to students in grades three to eight. For the students in grade two, they take another version called the MPG that also is administered in the spring. As the common assessment used throughout the district, the NWEA will replace the SAT 10 as the tool along with grades that will be considered for promotion decisions. Again, reminding you that the NWEA assessments are more rigorous than the SAT 10, so the bar is being raised in terms of the tasks that the students are expected to perform. They're no longer filling in the bubble; they are writing; they are using academic language; they are interacting more with nonfiction text. Why is this change needed now? CPS policy requires that promotion criteria be communicated to parents by the November Parent/Teacher Conference Day. This year's report card pickup date is scheduled for Tuesday, November 12. Everyone's familiar with this graphic. This is our graphic for our Framework to Success across our district, which is based on the five pillars. The three pillars most heavily involved in the promotion policy are pillars one, which have to do with rigorous instruction, rigorous curriculum and powerful instruction; pillar two, which has to do with providing the supports necessary for students to be successful; and pillar three, which is about parent and community engagement. As you consider the proposed promotion policy, please take into consideration that students would need to have both passing grades and meet the minimum testing standards, which is the 24th percentile on the NWEA, to be promoted in June. The policy focuses on providing supports to students who fall short of either the grade or the assessment criteria. Supports will be provided in the form of interventions aligned to each student's NWEA What have we done so far? In August, once decisions were made in terms of the assessments that we would be using across the district and a conscientious effort was made to reduce the number of assessments, in August, a steering committee was convened. The steering committee was convened and comprised of our academic departments in our district as well as our supporting departments. It included members of the Law Department, members of the Assessment Department, the Accountability Department, the Office of Diverse Learner Supports, a well-rounded grouping of departments from the district to brainstorm what we may do in terms of a new promotion policy and to research past practices on our promotion policies, the effectiveness, the percentage of students who've been promoted, the percentage of students who've been retained, what's worked, what has not worked so well. After the research, we then began to draft a plan or proposal. After the proposal was done, we shared the proposal with focus groups, a variety of focus groups, which included network chiefs, teachers, principals, parent groups, faith-based groups, the PTA Advisory Board, and the Local School Council Advisory Board, to find out from them which of the suggestions we had that they were in favor of and which ones they had concerns about. This is just a depiction of the involvement of the groups. The one lavender circle that you see in terms of our elected officials that is scheduled but that has not, that particular focus group meeting has not occurred yet. So wanting to take a moment to remind you of what the promotion policy has looked like in the past. Since 2009, we had this current promotion policy that was based on two categorizations of students. And so with the current policy, the students were divided into two categories. Category one was comprised of students who scored at or above the 24th percentile on the SAT 10. Category two was comprised of students who scored below the 24th percentile. Then they were further subdivided into As and Bs. If students had grades of C or above, they were categorized as an A. If they had grades of C or, I'm sorry, of D or below, they were categorized as B. And so students in the past, if they were twos, they were referred to summer school; if they were 1Bs, they were referred to summer school. The current policy is based on student performance on the NWEA MAP. And the NWEA is significantly more rigorous than the ISAT or the SAT 10. So keeping the bar at the 24th percentile is in fact raising the bar because the assessment offers a different challenge level. So we're focusing on support for the students, especially during this transitional year. We would like to reserve the right to bring this policy back to your attention next year with the intention of raising the bar once we have had time to assess the impact of the interventions that we're proposing to support the students and the teachers with their success. We will delve a little deeper into each of the categories, but it's important to know that category three students are our students who are most in need of support. These are students who are both, who both have poor grades and who have very low scores. Category three students are students who are most at risk and will receive priority Let's look a little closer. Category one, just as before, represents the students who meet or exceed the cut score. Those in category 1A have passing grades and will thus be promoted in June. Those in category 1B have grades of F or below in reading or math or both, and they must attend summer school and they must pass summer school in order to qualify for promotion. Category two, these are students who fall between the 11th and the 23rd percentile on the NWEA assessment. The two As are passing with grades of C or above in reading and math. Based on their academic performance, these students would be promoted with supports in June. Summer school would not be required. The two Bs also fall within the range of the 11th and the 23rd percentile, but they have grades less than a C in reading and/or math. 2Bs must attend summer school and are promoted with supports upon receiving passing grades and passing the summer exit exam. 2B students who do not successfully complete summer school may be retained with supports. Category three, the threes are comprised of students who perform in the lowest decile of the NWEA. The threes are students who score at or below the 10th percentile. Whether they are As or Bs, threes are required to attend summer school. The summer school exit exam and passing grades are required for the category three students. Upon successful completion of summer school, threes would be promoted with support. Students who do not successfully complete summer school may be retained with supports. So I've been speaking about supports and the emphasis on support. What this promotion policy has that the previous policy does not include is that focus on supports. The emphasis is on identifying individual needs of students and providing interventions. It is on building systems of supports for administrators, teachers, and students, along with structures for monitoring and accountability in which we all share in the responsibility for ensuring that students are provided with the tools and resources and the conditions to succeed. The graph that you see simply spells out by quarters what those efforts will look like. With the NWEA results, we get those results back almost instantaneously. So schools know now which students right now are not at the 24th percentile. Work is underway at schools in terms of providing interventions for those students. Those interventions will be monitored throughout the school year. Our whole goal is to have as few students at the end of the school year unprepared as possible. We are in the process of training or retraining our administrators in terms of what we call multi-tiered systems of support, which is a response to intervention, which provides interventions in the form of additional instruction. It can be an extended school day; it can be additional time on an intervention; it can be a web-based intervention, but all based on what the NWEA report says that the individual student needs. We will be talking with you later about summer school, but the promotion policy is directly connected with summer school where the intention is to revamp summer school so that the student's summer learning plan is in alignment with what NWEA says the students need for growth. Questions?
Questions for Jessie?
You mentioned, and it's great that we're making this transition, but just so folks understand what it all, when you say that they get results almost instantaneously, is it because it's being graded electronically? What result you're getting isn't an absolute score against, just for that student, is it normed in any way against, you know, other students? Can you explain it just a little bit more?
Thank you.
And then I got one follow-up comment.
Yes. The NWEA is an adaptive assessment, and it's a web-based assessment, and so results come back, you know, right away. It's computerized. They get results in a few forms. One of them is in terms of a RIT score. And so the RIT score is what helps me with the individual student. It will say to me, "Annette needs to do blah, blah, blah; this is what Annette needs to work on." And in terms of the percentage, what it does is it enables me to look and see, so the RIT score lets me know about Annette, deeply about Annette. What the percentile does is it lets me know how Annette compares to other students like Annette.
Yeah. And then lastly, do we have any sample questions or sample sections of the test online for folks to see so they can see what we're talking about in terms of the questions being asked? And when I was at ISBE, I know when we came out with different tests, we always try to provide sample tests so that folks can understand exactly, what exactly does this look like?
I'm pretty certain that we could be able to access that. The other thing that I shared with you is that the NWEA is adaptive, and so the questions that Annette gets and the questions that Jessie gets are going to be a little bit different, but the types of questions would be, yes.
It'd be great for parents, the general community, to kind of see what exactly we're talking about in terms of these tests.
Yes, thank you.
See, any, any?
Can you talk a little bit about, some more about what the supports look like? You know, we talk about that a lot, but it's sometimes unclear to me, what does that mean?
Yes. And so we have been engaged with a variety of providers in terms of looking at, how best do we individualize or customize to make sure that what all students get is not one-size-fits-all? And so there are various providers that are aligned, have aligned their tools with the NWEA results. And what actually happens is it creates a learning path. It looks at the results, which generates a report that tells me exactly what needs to happen or what Annette needs to work on, and then it designs lessons, especially for me, that allows me to practice it. There are a variety of them. There is Compass Learning; there's Achieve 3000; there are a variety of them, and we're in the process of vetting to see which ones we feel will be most effective for summer because the plan is to have that continuity so that whatever we invest in for the intervention for the students in the summer, we want that to follow the students throughout the school year. So when you hear me say promotion with supports, we look at summer school itself as a support, but summer school is not the end-all. After summer school, they continue to have the license to be able to access their actual learning paths.
And, but who's accountable for working with the student to ensure that happens? Is the student accountable? Is the new teacher accountable? Is the old teacher accountable? Who's, who's going to own this per child?
Almost all of the above. And so what we're doing with our multi-tiered systems of support, we're building in systems, and so you heard me speak a little bit earlier about the academic side of the house all working together. We recently were engaged in a training on, you know, what this looks like. Every network across the district has to appoint, MTSS is the Multi-Tiered System of Support, so every-
Of course, we have an acronym for it.
So, yeah, but, and I stayed away from it for so long, but every, every network must have a liaison, a go-to person that we at Central Office connect with. Every school has a point person, and each school is responsible for tracking, much as they are responsible right now, for tracking what is happening with the students. We are building in systems so that during principals, during their monthly principals meetings, that this will be a part of the regular check-in, not unlike some things that we've done in the past where each network gets a report on what is happening and they have to speak to whether or not students are moving. I guess the short part of that answer would be progress monitoring that's taking place on all levels.
I think it would be helpful to me to at some point have a check-in, like at the beginning of the summer, you know, how many kids are in this category? How are we doing? Just so we know, because my worry always is we put these things on paper and then in execution, you know, we're not following, you know, it's, when it gets way out there into the field, that supports means something very different than what we're intending. And then my last question is, do we have some estimate yet, and you may not, of what the numbers of kids that you're thinking about, how many in summer school, and how many do you think would be falling into the supports? And it may be too early to do that, but that would be helpful to have at some point as well.
It is too early right now. We have created several scenarios with what does it look like with 11,000 students? What does it look like with more? We'll have a clear indication after the grades come out for the first quarter, and even that will just be a guesstimate because the whole goal is whoever is getting less than a C is to, you know, begin with these interventions so that we can reduce that number. But we do have the capacity to look at, particularly, I'll give, for example, on the primary level, we have the capacity to look at what students are classified as intensive now. And when I talk to you about the monitoring piece, what we look and do is we see how many students are at intensive? Who are these students who are at intensive? Then we look at middle of the year, did those numbers change at all? How many of those students move forward? How many students move backwards? What are you doing as a result of that? And so in terms of the monitoring systems, and particularly where most of our schools use the DIBELS TRC or they will be using the MPG for NWEA, we can see that. Where those schools have opted to use other things, then it requires closer supervision because we're looking at individualized programs, but a lot of these we can literally see from all levels, and we're tracking them.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Gurley.
Thank you.
Yes, I have two questions. Thank you, Annette, for this information. My first question has to do with some of the research evidence. You know, some students who are retained go right on track with the right level of support, but there is some evidence that some of these students sometimes drop out. So how are we addressing this particular need?
So, what we're addressing, the way we're addressing that is to try and put in as strong of a support system as possible so that we don't have to retain. In the event that we retain, I think what you're hearing that's different, I think for a long time what was supposed to happen is when students were retained, something different was supposed to happen. But in many instances, students have been retained, and they've been retained with the same curriculum, the same instructional program. And so for those students who are not successful, again, they will have the personalized learning plans, and those personalized learning plans will be heavily monitored. The goal, however, is to have as few students retained as possible.
Thank you. And my second question, grades are, is a variable, and there's a subjectivity of grades connected to this. How are we addressing that particular need? So there's not a lot of variation because it's the life of a student.
Yeah. And that's been a challenge that we've had for a long time, and that's one of the reasons that we're not relying solely on grades. It's going to be grades and it's going to be assessments. And if you heard me speak earlier about our most high-risk students, those are the students who are the threes. Whether the threes have Cs or not, the threes are required to go to summer school because the data is saying to us that these students are really, really struggling despite the grades, they're going to need the support. And if the test scores are fluking, the grades are accurate, it won't do them any harm. It'll prevent them from having summer learning loss.
Right. But in our approach in the district, are we addressing this in staff development in terms of assessments and how that will generate, the evidence that will generate a grade that the student deserves?
Yeah. So that is work that is moving forward. We are working on a common grading policy. We currently in the district do not have a common grading scale, and that is work that is underway for this year. The Office of Policies and Procedures has just begun assembling the committee to work on this work, so yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to first commend you on the work you've done thus far, and I'm very happy to see that supports are being put in place for the students. But I, like Andy, would like to be kept up on what these supports look like, you know, throughout the year. The other thing is, I'm very happy that we're looking at summer school in a different way because of, as I have expressed to you before, I never thought it was very productive for kids. So I really hope that we'll be looking at it from an acceleration advantage versus remediation because that has not been effective when we've done that. And my question is, there's a group of kids, and I'm not sure, since you said there was individual support, what this is going to look like for those kids who have been retained and end up being 15 in sixth grade? So I'm just not sure if that population is going to be in this or that's going to be something different, and what is that going to look like so that we can catch them before they get into high school, hopefully?
Yes. That population is not in this scenario that I presented for you right now. That is a special population with very unique needs that Gerard Shirley is now undertaking that work. And they are researching what has happened in the past. We're looking to see what we can put in place for next school year, but we're really, really looking at how do we catch the students before they get to be 15? So for next school year, we're still kind of putting a Band-Aid on it. We're going to do something a little bit different, but the solution is not to catch them at 15 and try something, you know, that's going to be a miracle cure. It's not going to work. We're looking and we're starting our focus down in primary, which is where we see that the gaps first show themselves, and they tend to spread as we go throughout the learning career of the students.
And Gerard Shirley is up under you?
Yes. Gerard Shirley is new to my team.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, Fern?
Thank you, thank you, Annette, for very thorough-
Thank you, thank you, Annette, for a very thorough presentation and for your responsiveness. Appreciate it.
Barbara, do you have anything else?
No, actually, this concludes our report. President Vitale.